Hi, my name is Brian Hawkins and I'm the most dangerous political figure in California. Let's go ahead and address the elephant in the room. I'm black, I'm conservative, I back the blue, I protect the Second Amendment. I'm a pro-life person, all life, your whole life. I believe every livelihood is essential and I'm a black man saying it. I'm exactly the type of person you need in Congress, somebody that can't be bought. I make big things happen even in a small town like this. I'm not going there to make friends, I'm going to make a difference for you, your family, your small business, and your livelihood. This isn't a liberal or conservative thing, this is an American thing.
Welcome to The Fallen State, I am Jesse Peterson, thank you so much for being with me. Don't forget that The Fallen State is now on Locals.com, so click the link in the description to support our work, I do appreciate it. I have with me Pastor Brian Hawkins, he is a pastor at the Divine Appointment Worship Center in San Jacinto, California, and serves as city council member in San Jacinto as well. Thank you for being here.
Thank you sir, and I appreciate you for having me.
Yes sir, and so you became pastor first or city council member?
I was pastor first.
Nice, and why did you decide to become a city council member?
So always as a pastor, I was involved in my community. So prior to me ever running for office, before the pandemic, we did voting precincts at our church, so I was always encouraging people to get involved into politics, always talked about the importance of letting your voice be heard. And so after a while, I just, you know, I looked at the local elected officials and I asked myself, you know, which ones really speak to the heart of the issues that I'm hearing from people in the church all the time?
Right.
You never really see your elected officials, but you do see your clergyman, and so I said, you know, wouldn't it be a great balance, you know, since I'm always seen and always, you know, available for the people to go in and be a local legislator? And that's what I decided to do was run for city council in my community.
Yeah, man, that's major. And so are there black people other than you in San Jacinto?
Yeah, it is, I mean, it's interesting because I'm actually the first black elected official in the city of San Jacinto, but you know, we make up about 7% of the population, of a population of about 57,000, so there's a lot of black families that are moving in, especially since the expense in Los Angeles, people are starting to really move to Riverside County.
Oh, I see. And so the blacks, so you, the blacks that are moving there, are they like conservative blacks? Or did, or when you ran, did you get the Hispanics and the blacks?
There was a mixture, I got both, you know, yeah, my message really resonated with the people in the community. You know, when you run local, nobody knows your party affiliation, so you don't have to disclose your political party. And so, you know, people, when they vote, they vote like, you know, are you going to address the issue with potholes, homelessness, crime? You know, they were concerned about the issue, they didn't care which party was my affiliation. But to answer your question, there's been a mixture, you know, there's a lot of, you know, blacks are conservative by, you know, nature, you know, blacks are mostly all conservative. I just think that when it comes down to affiliation of a party, many of them does vote or register as Democrats. But majority of the blacks that I do speak to, they do have more of a conservative opinion about issues.
Give me an example, what does that mean? Because I heard that before, and, but I don't know what it means.
Yeah, so-
That blacks are conservative by nature.
Right, so, you know, when you look at, you know, the early 1930s, 40s, 50s, really before, you know, the war on poverty, you start to see a separation and, you know, pulling fathers out of the home. You know, the black community was a strength when you had the fathers in the home. You know, you had, you know, children seeing dads go to work, you know, you know, black churches, you know, folks, all, black folks always put God first, you know, you always saw prayer happening. You look at the state of, you know, the AME, the Kojiks, you know, you know, a lot of the, you know, black churches apostolic. So, you know, black folks always put God first, you know, the love for this country, many of the men that went and fought in Vietnam War and World War II, and, you know, just many of the wars, the pride that they had growing up for this country. I didn't start seeing this kind of, you know, hatred in so much ways, I'm starting to see now with a lot of blacks in the community, growing up, I've always seen a very great love for this country.
So are they that way now, or are they conservative by nature now, today? Because you're right, in growing up, it was totally different than it is today. So were they conservative by nature? I mean, are they conservative by nature now, or?
I believe so. I just recently got back from Georgia and I spoke with a lot of Democrats in that area, and some of the issues that they were concerned with, you would be surprised that they were more concerned with issues that are being brought up from the Republican Party than in the Democratic Party. I guess they just don't associate with the people who's giving them that message. But yeah, when you sit down and you talk to individuals on a one-on-one basis, you know, they believe in capitalism, you know, you know, they believe in a smaller government, they believe in lower taxes, like, I haven't met anybody who don't believe in lower taxes, so.
Yeah, and so when they vote, they're just voting for the Democratic Party because they are Democrat?
Absolutely, it's generational thing. Grandmothers, grandmothers, great-grandmothers, grandfathers have passed along the torch of voting one party, and that's kind of like been the conversation. Many of them, when you ask, you know, what's the difference between Republicans and Democrats, many of them really don't know the difference, they just know, hey, I'm supposed to vote Democrat.
And how can that change?
So, you know, it's kind of like, you know, the mindset of, you know, who's bringing the message? When you look at the person that's presenting a message to you, you ask yourself, you know, do you trust the messenger? And because we live in a society now, and you've seen this overwhelmingly push to hate white Americans, to hate white women, Karens, there's been this overwired distrust towards, you know, who's presenting the message? And then when you look at history, how much history hasn't been told correctly? So then you ask yourself, who's been in control of that history? And so now when you're starting to come to the truth, you say, okay, well, why didn't you just tell me this from the beginning? Now I could have worked and navigated my way through it.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, the more and more you get strong-minded black conservatives giving the message, you know, people recognize authenticity, you know, when you're real, I can accept somebody that's being real.
That's right, man. And so you are pastor, were you called by God, or did you have to go to school?
I didn't go to school, no, I went through struggles. You know, I was, yeah, I was a, I was a pastor that really went into the wilderness, you know? You know, my, my message is on the shoulders of the struggles that I've gone through. And so when I'm sharing a message with people, I'm sharing a message to let them know that, you know, regardless of what you've been through, you know, God can make a way. And, you know, when I read the Bible, I read the Bible through the stories of the men and women who have gone through adversity, and God has always made a way for them. And so, yeah, no, my, my calling has come from, you know, the wilderness, you know, the Moses, the Joseph experience, you know?
Amazing, man.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on the sitting board of the city council, there is a woman as president. Is that hard for you working under a woman? I mean, no, 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 she's mayor.
She's the mayor.
Yeah, is it hard for you to work under, is the city council subject to the mayor?
No, so it's a little bit different in our city, and actually, we just rotated last night, so she's no longer the mayor-
Oh, good.
-of our city, yes.
We got a man over there now?
Right, so, yeah. At the end of the day, our city is a little bit different because the people don't elect the mayor, the council, we select the mayor from the five of us. And so one person will nominate the council, and then the second nomination, and then we'll vote on it, as long as they get three votes. So currently, right now, our mayor is Alonzo Ledesma. Is it hard for me to work under a woman? No, it's not. I never had a problem working under anyone that has a direction for the people, and that's my biggest thing, you know? What is the message of hope for the people? Because if you're, if I'm drowning, I'm not going to say, hey, find me a woman that's going to throw me a lifeboat, you know? Or find me a man that's going to throw me a life raft, you know, I'm drowning, you know? I just want to get on the boat, you know, help me get on the boat, you know, and we'll go from there. But no, I've never had a problem with women in leadership.
Because we were raised, and I think all people know it, that women were not created to lead, they were created to follow. And when I was growing up, you rarely saw a woman in so-called leadership role. And then, and, and so my generation, I know people who, at least one or two, who got sent and they died before they have, let a woman die to look at them. That's how serious they were about it, because it's not in the, do you agree it's not in the woman's nature to lead, that she was created to follow and not to lead?
So, so then you have to ask that, and I can understand where that's coming from, but then you would have to ask this question is, how did women get shifted into a leadership position? Did men stop leading effectively? You know, is one of the things that I will follow up with, you know, where did men started to deviate from, you know, where we were leading? You know, look at our state of our young men right now.
Yeah, a mess.
Right, you know, and look, look at what's happening in society with men in leadership role, the greed that's coming along with it. And so I really don't fault women for being pushed into a position that, you know, you would say was not meant for, but when you're giving the alternative in the state of the men that we have, I mean, look at our President of the United States, you know? I'd rather have a strong woman than a weak man, and it's hard for me to follow behind a weak man. It just, it just is, so.
And so you, so you do, do you agree that women were not created to lead, but because the men are weak, they are getting those positions?
Right, when we read the Bible, a woman is created, the Bible clearly calls a woman as a helpmate. You know, what does a helpmate does, and even when you look at Proverbs 31, you know, leadership is defined in, you know, in different aspects. Now, when you say a woman is not meant to lead, in what capacity? You know, is a woman meant to lead in rearing the home? Is a woman meant to lead in, in helping secure, you know? When I read Proverbs 31, I read a woman as a businesswoman that leads the charge of going out and negotiating for her husband, that way, by the time he comes to the table, she's already been, you know, put everything in order for him to walk right on in. And so it's almost like the woman does more leading behind the scene to prepare a man for his greatness, and that's why the Bible says that, you know, she's called blessed for that very reason, and everywhere that her husband goes, he's honored and admired.
She was, I know that that did happen, but the men in the Bible that allowed that to happen were weak as well, as, because the men in the Bible that were not weak did not send their women ahead of them like that. Women were made to help the man in, you know, in the home, stay pregnant in the kitchen, barefoot, have a, making babies, and running the household in that way, but still the man is over her when, when raising his kids. For example, if you need to discipline the kids, she watches over the kids, but when the father gets home, she reports to him and he discipling the kids. Because women are emotional, you know, mentally they are not stable and emotionally they're unstable, and so they tend to be overreacting to things, and that create a big problem. We look at the blacks, for example, most of the black men and women are angry and out of control because they were raised by women that did not have fathers to, to guide the women and how to raise them, angry mothers and grandmothers.
So I don't, so I don't necessarily agree with that. I mean, you know, there is, there has been an overwhelmingly show of absent fathers, but I've also seen a lot of strong black women who have raised in single homes, or raised as being a single mother, and raised extraordinary leaders in today's society.
Like who, for example?
So when you think about it, I mean, we could just go down a list, and so, gosh, my brain is just, just frozen for a second.
Yeah, that's what happened, anytime somebody say, well, give me a, true.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, my brain just immediately freezes up, but I can give you my sister, for example, she's a single mother. Her daughter right now, so even outside of anyone else, her daughter right now just made Team USA, you know, she's going to be playing, you know, for the Olympics. Her sons, both of them graduated from college, you know, and they're in the medical field, doing an extraordinary job. And so I'm watching a woman, you know, take on the shoulders of, you know, and her husband, you know, her, her children's father, my brother-in-law, well, they're no longer married, you know, he's there, but they're not in the same home. And I don't fault black women for black men, you know, not stepping up to the plate in those areas, but that just not only happens in black families, that happens across the board with Hispanics, with whites, we just don't talk about it as much.
It happens everywhere now.
And I think that, you know, to say that, you know, black people are angry, I think there's more of a compassion or a frustration with some of the outcomes of trying that has caused that. And I don't think anybody should be characterized in the wrong light because they choose to be angry at circumstances. Because now, look at society, has now demonized white women for being angry and calling them Karen. And I was just talking to a white lady the other day while I was in Georgia, I said, man, society now has made it to where you can't even be angry, because the moment you're angry, somebody is going to film you, and you must run and lose your career, your job, and anything, and it's almost like now white people are in somewhat in the same boat that black people have been looked at for a long time under this judgmental lens of being, you know, characterized in a certain way, so.
I noticed that, well, there's no such thing as a strong woman, just weak men, and the example you gave of this, your sister sending these kids to school, that's not the sign of a strong person at all. The sign of a strong person is one that is not angry, and they, because these people going to school, they're getting beaucoup degrees, but emotionally and mentally, they're, they're out of it. They're angry, they're depressed, they worry, they have doubt, they overreact to life, they worry about what people think about them, they're imbeciles, jealous, and strife, but they have degrees. And so if you're not, so education is not a sign of, of strength, it's a sign of weakness of anything, because it tends to try to cover up the fact that you're weak.
So you're saying that someone who gets an education is covering up the sign that they're weak?
Yeah, because they have to now pretend that they're smart, they have to pretend that they're strong, but behind closed doors, they have fear, they, they're worried, they're depressed, anxiety, and they overreact to life.
I think, I think everyone has that sense of, you know, emotional roller coaster. I don't think education, or, I just think in life, we all have these moments, even the wealthiest of people have these issues.
Right.
And so-
And why is that?
I mean, everybody just looks at life differently. I think that everybody, you know, you know, however their circle they've been surrounded up around with, I mean, look at myself, you know? I spent 10 years in prison, and I'm not-
I read that.
Yeah, and I'm not an angry black man towards law enforcement, I'm not angry towards the community that I grew up in, I'm not angry towards, you know, circumstance, or even the law, because it doesn't does my heart good. I'm not trying to, you know, subtract years of my life by having a stroke, you know, and I walk into spaces with a joy on my heart, and I continue to move forward. I think differently, I look at such circumstances differently. Now, can I fix that for other people? Absolutely, you know, by being an example. One thing we don't have is enough example of people who are sharing these truths publicly on a higher level to get that message out.
Do you, do you have fear?
In what capacity? Like, I don't-
Inwardly, do you have fear?
About what, like?
Anything, do you ever, do you have fear, period?
Um, no, I don't-
Not normal fear, like, you have to watch your backs out there because you don't want some black guy walking up to you-
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that fear, you know-
Put a gun on you. Not practical fear, but do you have fear inwardly?
No, I mean, I'm trying to get, so, no, I, I mean, I don't, like, you're talking to someone who, who spent, you know, at that time when I was thinking about it, it was the third, but a fourth of my life behind bars, and now I'm a, I'm a local legislator in my city.
Yeah. Do you have perfect peace?
I do, I do, I, well, I, I do, but I don't, because I think that there's so many people that look like me don't know that this is possible, you know, don't know what they really can do outside of what's been limited to them, you know? I can't tell you how many men I've met that didn't even know that they can vote here in California because of their background, you know, raising my children, you know, being involved, you know, the joy of dropping my kids off from school and helping them with their homework, getting them ready for college, you know, my nine and 10-year-old son and daughter, getting their mindset, thinking about the future, you know, it's a peaceful, it's a joy for me. And so, yeah, I-
How do, so many times I want to ask about that, but first, how do you deal with it when you have downtown, you're alone and nowhere around, and you don't seem as important anymore, how do you deal with that?
So that's the thing about it, I'm not, I'm not trying to be important, I'm trying to be effective, I'm trying to change narratives. Unfortunately, in order for me to do it on a big scale, I have to be important, but I don't need to be important in the eyes of trying to be, you know, this viral follower, trying to be this big name out there, but the catch-22 to it is that I have to be if I want to make a large-scale change, you know? America needs to see someone like me, you know, they need to know, like, I don't hold grudges.
When you say someone like you, what do you mean by someone like you?
Well, me, I'm a different type of person, like, I don't hold grudges towards anyone. I'm not angry towards anyone, I don't walk around with this bitter chip on my shoulder, and I've been done wrong by many people who have used my name and, you know, to try to help themselves, and, but I don't, I don't, I don't walk around needing validation from anyone, I don't need anybody's approval. But at the same time, I want to get things done, and I want to help as many people see the road to possibility, you know, as possible. I want to see black people do better than what society keeps marketing, you know? If we all just, if we just continue to market black women as on, you know, cars twerking, or fathers that are absentee, there are a lot of black fathers that are not absentee, there are a lot of black women that are not twerking, there are educators and doctors and scientists, CEOs, you know, that's not being shown. And it bothers me that society don't want to show black folks in the best light, they want to just show us in the worst light.
You agree that all people have some form of fear or overreact to life, stress, and anxiety and things like that, right?
Absolutely.
What caused that?
Other people's box. I think the moment you share your vision with someone and they don't have the capacity to think big or to see it possible, I think that they automatically wrap their fears around people. You remember in the Bible where the children of Israel, Moses had sent the 12 spies out to spy out the land? And they came back with a report, and 10 of those 12 spies was like, we saw the land, it was flowing with milk and honey, but we saw the grasshoppers, and in our own mind, we looked like giant, they looked like giants, and we looked like grasshoppers to the giants. So they automatically shrunk to what they saw, and they caused millions of other people to become fearful. Those other people never even went to go spy out the land, they never went to go see the land flowing with milk and honey, but because the fear that was given to them from other individuals, it automatically resonated in their heart. And I think a lot of people living in the fear of what someone else told them.
Can you be born again of the Spirit of God and still have fear?
True born again? No.
So could that be the problem that most people, especially the Christians, are not really born again of the Spirit of God? They went down to the front of the church and they're up to Jesus, Lord, and Savior, but that's not what it means to be born again, because all human beings who are born through the woman are born of the flesh, and anyone that's born of the flesh has fear and doubt and worry and jealousy and all this crazy stuff, right? But once you were born of the Spirit of God, you no longer have that.
And you said it right there, you know, the Bible says it's impossible to have tasted the goodness of Jesus and then turn back to your old self. And so I asked a question, how many people have really tasted the goodness? How many people have really gotten saved? How many people have really been baptized by the Holy Spirit? You know, the Bible says that, you know, many of them have a form of godliness, and that's just the truth. So many people have this form of godliness, they don't have a true relationship with God or have, you know, accepted, you know, and followed, and, you know, many people, you know, just read the Bible for what it is, but not really accept it for what it can really do.
And so is it possible that one of the reasons that not all, not all, not all, but most black people are suffering is because even though they go to church and they hoop and holler, they carry on, they have not been truly been born of God?
Yeah, and, and that's another good statement too, because the state of the black church has really let down the black community. I, I said this so many times, when you look at a lot of these pastors that are pushing this agenda, you know, I look at, you know, pastor in Georgia that just recently won the senate race, you know, there were some things that, when you read some of the messages, you're like, you know, this is not biblical, but then you have people that are still, you know, lining themselves up with it, because we have been conditioned to accept the state of the black church, and those pastors that have gotten a pulpit that have misled so many people.
Yeah, I saw one of those, so you were down there for the Herschel-Walker and-
Warnock.
Warnock runoff thing, right?
Yes, sir.
I saw, and I played on my radio show, these preachers would gather around in this church somewhere down there, black preachers, Democrats, and they were saying, the preacher was saying something like, because I don't remember the site, but, I mean, quote, "I believe in God, I worship God, I love my God, I worship my God, and I'm gonna get out there and vote for Warnock, I'm gonna do everything I can for Warnock, I'm gonna worship my God." He was like he would call the Warnock God, and the congregation were praising the Lord and holding up hands and amen, and I was like, what's wrong with y'all? This man is, is, is out of it, and they're just blindly following him.
Well, I think, you know, and it wasn't so much Herschel and Warnock, it was Republican Democrat.
Yeah.
You know, and that's really what it came down to, it's, do the, do black people trust the Republican Party enough to really help with the state of the black situation? And the Republican Party has proven over years by its inability, and, you know, I looked at so many posts after the Herschel-Walker Warnock runoff, and this was by some prominent black conservatives that were, you know, responding to, you know, this is proof that the Republican Party doesn't care about the state of the black community, because not one time, and I was down there, not one time did the Republican Party ever attempt to go into Fulton County, you know, Gwinnett County, Cobb County, you know, DeCobb County, never did they go into those areas, because they automatically wrote them off. So on one end, you're saying, well, and, and black people know this, I, there's so many black people that I met down in Georgia that was like, man, I'm tired of the Democratic Party. Yeah, I'm like really tired of the Democratic Party, these promises and promises and promises, and then nothing, they don't deliver on anything. So on one end, it's like, I'm a part of a party that doesn't even want to address my issues, and on the other end, there's this party that don't even want to come and see about my issues. So at least I'm in a party that's saying, I see your issues, I'm not going to do nothing about it, then me going over to a party that says, I don't even see your issues, so I'm definitely not going to do anything about it. And so that was, that was what you were seeing, you wasn't necessarily seeing, you know, oh, because there were people, like, look how close the race was. So it wasn't like people were overwhelmingly convinced that Warnock was the guy, but they were 100% sure that Walker wasn't.
I noticed, you know, I remember when Bill Clinton ran, and he would go into the black community and talk to those folks, right? And I remember when George, George Bush ran, he did not do that. And I was saying then, way back then, that the Republicans need to at least go into these communities and talk to the blacks, and let them hoop and holler, and let them say what they got to say, but respond to them, so they can hear both sides of the story, but for some reason, they will not go into the black community. Are they afraid to get hurt? Are they afraid of the blacks? Why don't they campaign in, in the heart of the black community?
Because they're driven by data, and the data will say that blacks have overwhelmingly voted Democrat, you know, for the last 50 years. And so the data says, what's the purpose of going over there when we already know? But what they're not looking at is the data before the 1965 Voting Rights Act. Why were black people voting for Republicans in the 50s, in the 40s? What was the message that the Republican Party had for black people then? 1854, the abolishment of slavery, the Nebraska-Kansas Act, what was the message? You know, what was the economic platform that the Republican Party had for black people? You know, circular order number 15, you know, what was the strategy? You know, the Reconstruction Era, the Freedmen Bureau Act, what were the strategies? And so now, the Republican Party doesn't have a message to say, listen, this is what we have intentionally, you know, to get, you know, into the black community, because the Democrats are saying, hey, we got all these programs, you know, we're going to come over here and, and, and give you a sense of a seat at the table, we'll give you a couple of black leaders, we'll give you a black president, you know, we'll, we'll give you an identity in the party, maybe not a voice. Maybe not a voice, but we'll at least give you an identity. And that's the problem with the Republican Party, no identity, no voice, no attempts. And there's something that has to change there. If not, it's gonna be as my friend Jimmy Dixon said, and he's a representative, Republican representative, if the Republican Party refused to engage the black community, it's gonna be the death of the party. And it's just evidence.
Well, the Republican Party is gone already. We, we only have a one-party system now. Because in all honesty, the Republican Party is no different than the Democratic Party. They are there for themselves, they are there for money and perceived power. And they don't care because look at the borders, look at the crime, look at everything. And I remember there were times when they had control of both houses, they had the Great White Hope in there and they worked against him instead of working with him. Had they worked with him, he would have stayed, been there the next one. You know who the Great White Hope is, right?
No, who?
You don't know who the Great White Hope is?
No, who are you referring to?
What the? What the? Donald Trump.
Oh, I, I, okay, yeah. Sorry.
What the? Because he was different than them. He put America first, whereas the representatives there now do not put America first. They put their own personal stuff, image. But I want to ask, if we had a perfect Republican Party, would that help the blacks get better?
Well, so you have to ask yourself, well, what does that look like?
No, I'm just saying, if we had whatever perfect mean, would the blacks get better or would they stay the same?
Like you said, you know, both parties is ran by greed, you know? So in order for anybody to get better, you gotta change who's ever at the top making the decisions. Because apparently they know how to stay in power and how to shift what it looks like to be help, but if the reality of it is, I'm just trying to maintain my own political power. But I do believe that, you know, the Republican Party does rebrand itself. You know, there's a couple of things that I know personally could really help the Republican Party. One, some of the language we need to move away from. You know, we need to define what does America first look like? Because when you read history, you know, America first doesn't sound like it involved anybody else but white people. That's the perception that the Democrats have put on individuals. When you think of, you know, when America was first established, remember it was established by, you know, the 56 white signatures on the, you know, the paper of the Declaration of Independence. And so when you think of America first, the first signatures that were on there were not one colored or woman signature on there.
Nice.
So that mindset, what does America first look like to the people who haven't bought into the America? Because the reality of it is, America first helps everyone. You know, a closed border, I'm thinking about your business. I just spent two weeks, I was at Black Wall Street. Guess what Black Wall Street is about? America first. They're thinking about capitalism, they're thinking about black entrepreneurship. That's American first concept.
So you believe?
They want a closed border. You know, black folks in Georgia believe that, you know, illegal immigration is hurting them. So, you know, so that message resonate with them? They just not seeing it where, how does this play a part in my economic stability?
So you believe that if we had all that, a perfect Republican Party, whatever perfect mean, that black people would get better?
Yeah, well, so black people are getting better. And that's the thing about it too. I just, like I said, I just spent two weeks in a city to where I saw black excellence at, at its highest level. You know, going around a different business, I saw more black.
Down in Georgia?
Yeah. I saw more black doctors, more black dentists, more black entrepreneurs. You know, I saw kids walking around, you know, excited about their educational opportunities. I spent time at Spelman University in Morehouse. So I saw black people in the light of excellence, beautiful black communities, not ran down, there wasn't shoes on the wires. And so there's black folks throughout America that are doing exceptionally well. The media just don't have an appetite for that.
But still, even though they may have all those things, inwardly, they're still angry.
What makes you think?
They believe that racism is this, they still vote for.
So that's not them.
They still vote for the Democratic Party because they have not taken responsibility for their own lives inwardly. They're not thinking for themselves, they think in groups, they think in color rather than in right way.
Well, every, everyone should think in groups as far as building up because, you know, you need an intersectionality of support. You need a collective, you know, community to grow and thrive in. I mean, nobody, you don't grow by yourself.
So you should be thinking in color and groups?
What do you mean in color?
Like, they, they, they about their blackness. They identify with their blackness.
Well, I think.
They think that all black people are brothers and sisters.
I think every, I think every ethnic group do the same thing.
Well, and this, before the civil rights movement, black people didn't think that way. And they did much better then. I grew up in Alabama, when the Jim Crow law existed. And prior to the civil rights movement, black people didn't think in color and they didn't think in community. They didn't think, they thought as individuals. And they took care of themselves and their families. And they wouldn't let us play with the bad black kids because they knew the black parents were no good. And they voted for people that represented their principles rather than their color. And that's why they started the Republican Party because they, they're black, would not allow in the Democratic Party.
And I think that they still, there's, I guess.
But ever since the civil rights movement, they fell for the lie about color and that all blacks are the same. And it's just been downhill ever since.
So, and I've gone on record and I've said that the civil rights movement was probably one of the most detrimental movements.
It was the worst thing, other than abortion.
Because, you know, me being on city council, I understand what happens when you spend your money outside of your community. And I think that there was an appetite to spend it up the street than right in your community. Because the moment you do that, you start shutting down those businesses. And it's one of the reasons why they're trying to revisit that concept. I think that prior to the 1960s, you didn't have to see color because all you did was solve one color. When you were in communities that was all black, there was no contrast, there was nothing to compare it to until the civil rights movement. So people's under the impression that, you know, white people had it better up the road, you know, that they had it better in, you know, their institutions. Now, you can argue that.
Not true though, because they built black universities back then and they were good schools.
Well, you're right. And, and, and that's one of the things that people, you know, but it, it wasn't about being a black school, it was what society was accepting when you went to certain schools. You know, would someone accept someone Harvard over Howard? How many, how, how many Harvard graduates would be accepted before a Howard graduate would be let in?
Would be accepted where?
Like, as far as law firms, you know?
But the blacks built their own law firm. They didn't, they didn't, they weren't trying to force their way into someone else's stuff. And they would always tell us while we were growing up, if someone don't want you in their home, or they don't want you in their business, they have a right not to want you there.
Absolutely.
Matter of fact, I remember when the civil rights movement started and I was still a teenager, I remember with Martin Luther King and all those guys started a whole mess. And, and they started forcing their way into white businesses, sitting at the counter, you gotta give me, feed me anyway kind of thing. And whites didn't want to do it. The older black people saying, that doesn't make sense. You don't have a right to impose on someone else's business like that. If they don't want to feed you, go start your, make your own meal. They had that kind of mentality. They don't have that anymore.
So, and, and I get where you're coming from. And so then the question would, and, and the question would come is, okay, so now that we're in 2022, with all of the advancements, because there has to be a shift in the mindset. And I said, one of the biggest things would be is, black folks need to see other black people thriving to know that these things is possible. But if the media continue to keep showing the worst of the side of black people, they're, they're gonna think that this is all we're good at, you know? We're only good at being entertainers.
But not if they are a free spirit person. If they had love of their hearts, they wouldn't be thinking that. Because as an individual, you don't, you're not either think that somebody or something can hold you back or cannot, or can't, you're not either think they can or cannot hold you back. You just live your life and it's not based on what's happening out there, it's based on what's happening within. I never, never, ever, ever think that I can or cannot do something. I didn't grow up thinking, we never gonna have a black president in the country. So I, I just, it just wasn't a part of my thinking. And it just seemed dumb to think that way.
So I didn't think like that either, however. And this, and, and it's good that you, you invited me to come on today. Because in the last two weeks, I've never seen what my eyes witnessed as far as black excellence. Because two weeks ago, I would have been under that mindset that all we are is entertaining. And I know that we've done more and I know we've accomplished more.
I do too.
But to see it in such an abundance as the way I saw it in Stonecrest, Georgia, the way I saw it in, you know, talking to different, you know, business owners, you know? I met a lady that started a vegan business, you know, Pinky Cole. You know, she started this business five years ago and she's up to eight, you know, restaurants now. You know, her business is worth over $100 million, you know? We should be telling this huge story, you know? Tyler Perry. So, you know, to see black educators walking around the community, cities need to see that overwhelmingly, you know? It's like a real Wakanda in a sense.
But that still wouldn't help the blacks because, look at, you mentioned Tyler Perry, right? Look at Tyler Perry, he owns a studio, he make movies, he's funny. His movies are interesting, but in his heart, they're still into the black thing. They still believe racism is this. And a lot of they are pushing this idea of racism, that's what's holding the blacks back because they are angry.
So what is?
And anger is evil.
So I, I had this conversation about my race when I ran for office. And I honestly believe, I honestly believe that there were some whites that didn't vote for me, Republicans, because I was black. I was overwhelmingly endorsed by the Republican Party. Shares, you know, tons of endorsement. And I actually happened to hear a conversation of a couple of white gentlemen who were walking by, we were putting up flags at a park in my city. And they didn't even realize I was standing right there. And they literally were like, yeah, I voted for the Democrat on there, I just couldn't see myself voting for him. And I'm like, okay, I'm over here doing all these amazing things, you know? I sued the governor to open up the school. You know, I've always been someone that put other people's needs above myself. You know, the Herschel Walker race showed itself. There are individuals, and I can't say everyone, but there are individuals that still have an issue with color. And this is on both sides. There's some black folks that have issue with white people because of the color, but there's some white folks that have issue with black people because of color.
So should they have voted for you because you were black?
Absolutely. No, no, that's not, no, no, no.
So there's nothing wrong with that. And they, they say, well, I don't want to vote for him because he's black.
Right. But you would have to, you would have to, what would be your underlying reason when you looked at my qualifications?
Well, I, I don't know because I didn't talk to them personally, right? But my point is, there's nothing wrong if they decided not to vote for you because you're black or to vote for you because you're black. That's a decision that each individual make, right? Because there are white people who won't vote for the Great White Hope for example. He's the best, he's the best president, Donald Trump, that we ever had. And there are white people who won't vote for him because he's white. There are white people voted for Obama because he was black. And so people make dumb, stupid stuff, right? Because they can't see. But I just want you to, I'm just wondering.
There were, there were black people who voted for Obama just because he was black.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
What a mess.
Yeah, you know, so people, and I don't fault people for whatever their reasons are, for whatever their reasons are. Because I believe that there are things that we can get stuck on. And I think that these are some of those issues. Because right now, as we're talking about that particular issues, guess what? We're still dealing with inflation. We're still dealing with a horrible border crisis. We're still dealing with one of the worst public schools systems in the United States here in California. You know, you know, so we're definitely not setting our children up for a better future. And so.
Do you think our country will ever get better again? It will ever come back to normal?
So I guess the question is, what is considered better? And better for who? Or when was the country ever better?
In the good old days, before the civil rights movement.
So if that's the definition of better, how did that feel for, I mean, you know, I mean, a better country is a country to where we shouldn't be dealing with poverty. You know, especially in a country where, you know?
Well, you're right, because Christ said, if people don't eat, if people don't work, they don't eat. We trying to feed everybody instead of letting them starve themselves out so they can get up and get a job. Because while we feed them, they ain't gonna do nothing.
And, and, and that's another thing too. So the solution is, you know, because there's a pathway to getting better in this country.
So do you think the country will ever get better again?
Like I said, I wouldn't say again, I could say the country will be better moving forward.
So you think we're gonna get better?
I believe so.
How?
Well, I mean, you know, the state of the situation, people are already starting to get frustrated. And, you know, the moment the Republican Party presents a better alternative, because there has, there has to be, when you said we're a one-party system? The Republican Party is in a unique place right now. And when you look at the writings on the wall and the data, you could say to yourself, okay, do we really want to continue to embrace? I would have never thought, two years ago, that there would be Republicans that didn't want to see Trump get reelected. And there are, there are an overwhelmingly number of Republicans. There were some, there were some diehard Trumpers out there that are like, no, I'd rather he just go away, just, you know, go retire, go be a grandfather. So that right there lets you know that there is a feel and a moral compass of some individuals that, you know, I wanna, I wanna get better, I'm willing to work at getting better. I'm not trying to save Trump's legacy, I'm trying to save America.
So do you think the country will get better?
I do.
How?
That's what I'm saying. So, once you get to this place to where you want better and you want to present better candidates with better solutions, you know, I want to see people get better, I think that's the message the Republican Party needs to spin on.
So you're saying that if they had more candidates in running or in winning, that the country would get better?
Yeah, well, candidates that actually want to work together and come up with legitimate solutions.
How can we get better? When I look out there, I see that they're setting it up where it would not get better, it would only get worse. Because when you really pay attention, they put all these women in government, council, Congress and senators and, and we have a stupid woman in vice president now. They're putting women in position of businesses where they're taking over companies. They're putting these women in the police department and calling them captains, they're putting them in the military. And we all know that the hell come through the woman, that's what screw up the kids, right? If they're put in the hell in position of power, how would they get better? Because women are only gonna produce hell, they can't produce heaven.
So I.
So how would it get better?
So there lies a point right there, you know, when you look at some of the women that have been in leadership, you know, they've done remarkable jobs.
Messing up.
Well, I mean, like where? What would you give me?
Everywhere.
Like where? Give me, give me an example. Give me, give me, give me an example of a woman that have been put in a job that have messed it up.
Maxine Waters and Sheila Jackson Lee and all these black women in position now in government. They have screwed up the government in the same way they screwed up the kids in their homes and in the neighborhoods.
Okay, what about Condoleezza Rice?
Violent crime, violent crime is, is out of control as a result of women taking over the schools and taking over the home. Kids are out of control, not because of the father, but because of the woman, the hell that came through the mother. And we had the same thing happening in business and in government now. Because women serve evil, they don't serve good. Do you disagree?
I disagree.
But you're a pastor, you know better than that.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's, that's not how the Bible is written. I mean, there's, there was.
Do you believe in God's order?
I do.
What's the order?
Man, I mean, Christ, you know, God is the head, you know? So I, I do, I accept that.
And what is after that? After God who?
Man.
Christ.
Okay.
And then, and after, after Christ?
Man.
And after man?
Woman.
Then the children, right?
Right.
So if the woman is created to follow, why they putting her in a role of leadership? That's how their homes got screwed up in the black community, they put the woman in charge of their home. And the kids went to hell in a hair basket. Angry, out of control, children out of wedlock, hated the white man, joined violent, you know, gangs, the, the boys and the girls because of the mother. And if they're putting them in charge of the country, how would the country get better? When the evil works through the woman?
So what do you say in white homes where kids are growing up with both parents and they go and shoot up a school?
It's the same thing, the father is allowing the woman to guide his children rather than he guiding the woman and the children.
Right, so, I mean.
And they are angry that came from the mother.
Yeah, but.
Do you agree that the anger come from the mother and not the father?
No, I think anger comes from men.
But men who are angry.
It's the seed, I mean, because the Bible talks.
But they're acting like a woman.
Yeah, but sin comes through the seed, so it can't come through the woman.
It come through the woman.
It can't, if, if, if sin comes through the seed, it has to come through the man.
How's that?
Well, because that's the reason why, remember, Jesus was born of a woman and he was born of perfect peace. He didn't come with a seed of a man, so therefore, without a man, Jesus was born.
You said, what did I repeat that?
Jesus was born without a seed of a man, right? The virgin birth.
No, he was born without that of a woman. He was born through the woman, but he was born of the man because God spiritually created him, right? And so he just came through the woman, but he didn't take on her identity.
No, but, but that's what I'm saying, the seed, right? The seed that were, were the David seed, or, or, you know, the Adam.
But it's not of the woman though.
It is, the sin comes through the man from the, from the seed of Adam.
No, it comes through the woman. Now, what happens is, what happens is, the man, the man, we, we are born of the woman. Christ was not born of the woman, Christ was born of the Father. But we are born of the woman, so coming through the woman, we take on her hell. Her anger, her, all the mess he brings, right? And that's why we must be born again of the spirit of the Father.
So Jesus shouldn't have had no anger, right?
So of the spirit of the Father, so those who are born of the spirit of the Father overcome the flesh of the woman.
So, okay, so by your logic.
Do you agree with that or disagree?
Disagree, so by your.
Why you disagree with that?
Because I'm gonna say, so by your logics, you're saying Jesus shouldn't have never had angry then.
And he did not have anger.
He did, when he turned over the tables.
He wasn't angry, he concerned. Because you could, when you of love, perfect love, you can see injustice and deal with it. But if you were blind, if, if a blind person is looking at Jesus dealing with the injustice, they gonna think he's in a fallen state like they are, but he wasn't.
Well, the Bible says anger had kindled upon him, he took three scores of extraordinary and he walked into the temple and he began to turn the tables over.
Well, you can't really, I don't know what the Bible meant when it said that because the Bible been so screwed up. It, it's been rewritten over and over and over.
We can't, we can't, God's word, the Bible's never been screwed up.
You know, the Bible is screwed up.
So.
That's why God put the word out of a heart. The word may flush in the spirit and we are supposed to be born of the spirit so we can live by the word of the heart and not of the Bible.
So you're saying that.
Because the Bible just puts us back to the heart.
So you're saying that women in leadership messes things up?
Absolutely, in the homes, in the schools, in the government, in the businesses and everything.
So are you, are you blaming women? Or are you blaming men for moving out of position?
I'm blaming women for what they do and the men for what they do.
Okay, but, but, but a woman is only responding to a man shifting himself out of position. Because the position wouldn't become available, right? Had the man made the right decisions when they were in positions.
But he cannot make the right decisions until he overcome mama. He must be born of the Father. Then he would not be afraid to tell the woman the truth, no, you're not getting in this position. No, you stay at home and have my children, you're not gonna work. He's not able to do that because he has not overcome the spirit of mama. And so every woman can get involved with, whether it's at work or in government or school or at home, whatever. It's the spirit of mama. That's why he must be born of the spirit of the Father so he could, uh, deal with the hell that's in the woman.
So do you know that no other race, well, sorry, but you know, as far as, like, it seem like in the black community, we're the only ones that demonize black women.
But that's not demonizing them by, because they were not like that prior to the civil rights movement. They would obey their husband. Do your wife obey you? Does she obey you?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, she has, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have that problem when it comes to anybody that I'm with because I know how to honor and respect a woman's position.
Does she obey you?
Yes, sir.
She obey you?
Yes, sir.
And how do you deal with the hell in her when she just mad about nothing, you come home from work? She up there all puffed up, swollen out of anger. Or she say to you, you always on the road, you always with her, you know, paying me an attention. When that kind of hell come out of her, how do you deal with that?
So, I mean, everybody has a right to have their, you know, you know, as we say, your love language attended to. And sometimes, you know, you could be so caught up in everything else around and forget that there is a home that must be maintained. And it's easy to get distracted with all of the other things that grab your attention and forget that, you know, the household should be the first place that a man works on.
So how do you deal with the hell when it comes out of her?
Well, I can stab, I, I don't, because I don't have that, you know, I, I create peace in my home, I mean, I'm.
Oh, you have already shown how to overcome all the hell?
I know how to be a king in my home, I know how to, you know, kings don't deal with that, kings don't have those issues. When you look at royalty, you know, kings don't have those, you like that right there.
So when the hell comes out, you just don't deal with it?
No, you, you know, you, you think of, you think of how a king is supposed to deal with, you know, individuals, let them have their moment. You know, everybody deserved to have they, they moment to, to want to break something, throw something.
So you never argue with the devil that's in her?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't do, because it takes away from my peace.
That's right. Do you believe that, oh, let me ask you this, because I'm looking at the clock here, the time going by so fast. What, what will it take for black people, men and women now, because the women has taken on the anger of the woman and they are so limited now, what would it take for black people to overcome anger?
So I think that, um, whatever the internal or external battle, because there's two battles happening at the same time. You know, a lot of it has to do with years and years of what's been in, I mean, you know, you look at the Jewish community, they teach their young men at a young age are very affectionate, very loving. You know, I've seen a lot of Jewish fathers kiss their sons. Those are some of the things that I'm starting to see more happening in, you know, black families and homes. Fathers being more affectionate with their sons, being more mentally there in the picture. Uh, I think the more, you know, we start seeing families, you know, that structure, that unit, uh, happen, there's a liberation that happens there.
But before when men were in charge, when black men were in charge of the family, they weren't doing all that hugging and kissing. And the father didn't have to say, I love you, but we knew that he loved us. My grandfather never said, I love you, right? But I knew he loved me. And they weren't doing all that hugging and kissing and they tried to make a phone call, I love you, all that mess. It, it was the spirit of the person. It wasn't all the outer up source, it was the spirit within, right?
Well, when you look at, when you look at, uh, African tribes, you saw the fathers being more compassionate.
I know, but where are they now?
Where are the what?
The tribes.
I mean, there are a lot of affluent, there are a lot of affluent, you know, communities in Africa where you see there's, there's a difference. I mean, we're looking at cultural America as opposed to the culture that was stripped away from black people in America. There was always this sense of a father being.
Was that working?
Nurturing, no, just, just a father being nurturing at home to his kids.
I know, but did it work?
It did.
So then why Africa is in such a mess now?
Because it was colonized, I mean, you're talking about, Africa was colonized.
But if they're so strong, why were they allowed to be colonized?
Because they were divided, you had different.
Because strong people would never be taken over by evil.
That's not true, I mean, Rome was taking over, Rome was one of the greatest.
Because it became weak.
Rome was one of the greatest empire, look what's happened in America.
It becoming weak because the men let the women take over.
Well, I said that earlier, I said, you know, when you said, what will be the thing, I said, men need to reposition themselves, they need to get back into place.
Yeah, do you believe racism is this?
I do, in a state of different places, I do.
And what does racism look like?
So racism has this, I mean, there's overt racism, there's unintended racism, there's blind racism, there's, you know, I mean, uneducated racism, I, I think that, um, there are individuals, because you gotta think about this. The sixties, and I don't know what year you were born, but the anger of the parents who were mad at Ruby Bridges when she was going to school, those people are still here.
Who was Ruby Bridges?
Ruby Bridges was the young seven-year-old black girl that was, uh, walked into, she was the first young black girl that was brought into a desegregated elementary school.
That was dumb for the black people to do that. Why force yourself, you can't make someone love you.
Well, it wasn't.
So that was dumb, they should have just continued to do what the Jews do, build their own world, make their own thing. People will respect them and they would come together naturally, those who were meant to come together. But the blacks were dumb trying to force themselves in somebody's school and what was wrong with their school that they need to force themselves in a white school? But let me ask you this, I gotta ask you this. Did God say racism exists?
What do you mean, did God say racism exists?
Anywhere does he say racism exists?
I mean, he says sin exists.
Does he say racism exists?
I mean, sin would be, I mean, racism would be from, you know, the results of sin, so.
Does God say racism exists?
Yeah, I mean, what do you mean, I mean, you know, there's plenty of scriptures in the Bible where it shows the difference of tribes and not married into different tribes.
Where does God say racism exists?
Like, what is your definition, I mean?
Because you're talking about human nature, human nature's always been screwed up.
Right.
That's why you must be born again of the nature of God. Where in the Bible does it say, God say racism exists?
I, I don't know, I would have to look and see, I mean.
Is God there?
Okay.
God said that I will battle, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against spirits and principalities and wickedness. And we work, we wrestle against evil, it's a battle between good and evil. But the world has made up this idea that racism exists. And when you think that racism exists, you forget that it's a spiritual battle.
No, and I.
It's a battle between good and evil, but if you didn't fall for this lie that racism exists, you will remember that the battle is spiritual and you would never blame someone else, you would be still and allow God to fight the battle for you. Racism does not exist.
And I get that concept, but we still, you know, the Bible talks about, you know, walking in the spirit and not in the flesh.
But if you think racism exists, you're not walking in the spirit, you are walking in the flesh.
Well, so you, you still have to be conscious of other people's beliefs and not everybody is spiritually strong. I'm speaking to the mind of, I know that there are people, right? Who, as much as we would love to say everyone is spiritual, everyone loves the Lord.
Everyone or not, where they are spirits, most people are the spirit of evil.
Right.
And there's a few have been born again in the spirit of God. And so if you can see, you would see that they are of the spirit of the devil. And, and you be an example, the light, so you can point them back to God, right? But most people are blind and they're looking at these things the way the devil looks at them, it's racism, it's sexism, it's homophobiaism, it's deputism, it's white supremacism, it's antisemitism, it's none of those things. It's either right or wrong, good or evil.
So.
It's a spiritual battle.
And that's a good way of looking at the same time.
It's the right way of looking at it.
It's, but there's a reason why that Jesus died on the cross, right? It's a reason why he acknowledged that sin exists. You know, he acknowledged that there was a need for him to die on the cross. So because of that acknowledgement, it made us to where we can accept it. You know, the Bible says, you know, first we must believe that we are, you know, who we are, that we need him as a deliverer. Delivered from what? You know, to say that something doesn't exist is to say that I don't need to be delivered from it.
But racism doesn't exist, sin exists, but racism doesn't. Evil exists, but racism doesn't. Good exists, but racism doesn't. It's a spiritual battle. And that's why we must, all who are born of the woman must be born of the Father. And what the woman has cleverly done with evil in her is turned the children away from their earthly fathers. And in return, turning them away from God. And she recreated them in her image. And so the kids grew up thinking mama is the, is the Cass Miao. You heard of Cass Miao, right? And when the woman is really the problem, she has turned the children away from God by turning them away from the earthly father. And most men are not wise enough to see that. And they fall for it and everybody suffers. That's why God said we must be born again. Otherwise, the woman never gonna get better and the kids never gonna get better, it's only gonna get worse. What is a man?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Someone that's created in the image and likeness of God.
I can't hear you.
Someone that's created in the image and the likeness of God.
So a man is someone that created in the image and the likeness of God? And what is love?
I mean, God's compassion towards anything that exists, you know, it's, I mean, to describe what love is, you know, it's, you know, the Greek said, you know, there's different, you know, levels of it. You know, agape would be the highest, that there's no, there's nothing that you can do to, you know, earn my reason for wanting to give you all of what's in me. So, I mean, I, I don't, you know, to ask that question, what is love? I mean, Jesus said, one that lays down his life for a friend would be the ultimate sacrifice of love, so.
So love is, uh, when you don't hate, when you overcome anger, when that spirit of anger is taken away from you, then the spirit of God, it's replaced by the spirit of God and that's what love is, is not being angry. I gotta heat this thing up here, this interview up and seal you on the hot seat. And I need you to answer these questions as quickly as possible.
All right.
All right? Is it a good thing or a bad thing that the white population in America is declining?
Is it a good thing?
Is it a good thing or a bad thing that the white population in America is declining?
I mean, I wouldn't say, you know, yeah, yeah, it's a good thing, I, I mean, I would say that, you know, based on the cost of living or housing affordability, you know, I guess maybe the balance out of, you know, but declining where though? I mean, are you talking, are you talking about in just America?
Is it a good thing or a bad thing that the white population in America is declining?
I think it's a good thing.
You think it's a good thing?
I think it's a good thing.
Uh, I was on the Field of Dollar Hugh show last week and.
I saw it.
You saw that?
I saw you, I saw your answer. I saw your invention answer.
Should you ever tell a woman, should a man ever tell a woman his problems?
Yes.
He should? Would you ever tell your wife or any woman your problems?
Yes.
Amazing, amazing.
Well, I, you know.
Did you take?
I think a woman should be Lois Lane to a Superman.
Did you take the jab?
Yes.
Do you love white people?
I do.
Did, uh, did you know that, uh, in July, we celebrate White History Month?
What is White History Month?
Uh, is when we recognize the great things that white folks did to make this country great.
Are you talking about Fourth of July?
Well, well, we do celebrate it.
Uh, because that's the only holiday I think.
We do celebrate it in, in July because you gotta admit, July just feels white.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Doesn't July just feels white?
I don't know what a feel white is, I've been black my whole life, so I don't, I don't know what a feel white is.
It's the earth flat around.
I'm not a scientist, but I'm gonna go with the knowledge that people have given me and go around.
So what else?
I said, I'm not a scientist, I've, I've, I'm not a, you know, I've never been in outer space to look at Earth from a different lens, but I'm gonna trust that the, the picture that's been given to me and the.
Did the bear shit in the woods?
I'm sure it has. That would sound like a logical place for it to, it's definitely not doing it in the house.
True or false, more black babies, uh, born in New York than are born?
True.
Is abortion worse than slavery?
I don't think anything's worse than slavery, but I think, well, yeah, it's, it's, that's a tough question. God, that's a tough question. I don't think anything's worse than slavery, but I think that killing potential, killing a child, you know, I mean, is horrific, so, but I don't, I don't think anybody should have endured what went on during slavery.
Have you, uh, is it true or false that any man that has anger is a woman?
No.
True or false?
False.
Is anger the woman, the nature of a woman or the nature of the man?
I think it's the nature of the man.
Would you ever vote for the great white hope?
No.
The President Trump?
No, I can't, yeah, so I'm, I'm at a, as much as I support, I, I'm, I'm thinking of the sanity of America and I'm thinking of, you know, because there's things that Trump could do. And it, it would have to be, you know, there's things that he can do. The same thing that Republicans are asking, that asked Obama to do when he got elected, that they felt like Obama created this racial narrative and this racial divide, which I believe it was here before, way before Obama. But I think that President Trump could do a better job of bringing our country together. Like, I wouldn't attack other Republicans, I definitely wouldn't attack DeSantis after he had just won in Florida. I think that there was just some kind of, kind of, you know.
I need these as quickly as possible.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I just wanted to, yeah.
Did Big Mama Michelle eat up all the ribs?
I don't know.
Did you have fun?
I did, I did.
Thank you for taking the hot seat.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you for coming on. Tell the folks how to find you.
So I, first I want to say thank you, you know, uh, we were just talking about you at my parents' home, uh, a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, sir.
What were you guys saying?
You don't want to hear it. They're liberals. So they was like, whatever you do, they ever go in the show and then I get an email to come invite us. I'm like, I'm going.
That's right.
But, uh, no, because you know, I, I, I think that it's refreshing that we have this. You can find me at, uh, Real Pastor Brian, uh, across any social media place, that's Brian with an I. I was born before nineteen eighty, so I spell it with an I.